Yeah, okay. Uh, welcome to the special meeting of the Chair of the City Council. It is 5:30 Wednesday, September 19th, 2018. The purpose of this meeting is a discussion over the budgets between the City Council, the Controller, and the Mayor. Uh, can I get a roll call, please, Michelle?
Councilperson Aller.
President.
Councilperson Azar.
President.
Councilperson Crossen.
President.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris. Councilperson Nassar.
President.
Councilperson Nation. Seven are present, two are absent.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, having done roll call, I'll go ahead and turn this over to the Americans.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I gave you all a little handout with several paperclip things. I didn't staple it because I wasn't sure if you would keep them together or not later, but there's a couple of things in here that'll last for a while. I'll walk through these is what I want to do first. So I guess, um, I will start out by saying, um, you know, we've been working on the budget now for quite a bit of time. Um, there'll be a couple of things I'll update you on as we go through this, but, um, what I wanted to do tonight primarily was to, you know, work our way through the changes to the budget, talk about revenues a little bit, and some comparisons, and then, um, how deep we go into the rest of it, I don't know, but I've got a Budget Comments page. We'll get to it in a minute. We'll talk about all the things that went up in the budgets, so hopefully that'll address a lot of your questions, but, um, let me just start with kind of a summary is where I'd like to begin. The total proposed 2019 budget is $93,256,550. So it's up a little bit from last year, and I'll talk about those details in a minute, but this budget consists of 22 total funds. We've had 21 funds in my first 11 years, but we added a new budget, um, which is the Public Safety, uh, LIT budget. So that's the next bullet, just reminding you that now we have 22 budgets that will go to the DLGF for approval, um, so that's what you guys will approve and we will forward to the DLGF sometime in October. The third bullet says that our total budget of revenues exceed total budget expenses, meaning all 22 of those funds, by $1.8 million. So when you take everything together, which we'll go through on the next page in detail, um, revenues exceed budgets for the fourth straight year, basically, is what I want to say. There are 12 balanced budgets out of those 22. Uh, the General Fund is balanced for the fourth straight year, uh, with revenue of $33,726,000 versus expenses of $32,310,000. And then there are eight budgets that are not balanced, but they will be balanced because of cash, using cash reserves, just like we do every, most of these funds use cash reserves in most years. I think maybe there's one on here that wouldn't normally do that, but I'll talk about those shortly. And then there are two budgets that are just unbalanced, which is the two golf courses, but as you can see, we've reduced that loss, um, pretty dramatically, about $200,000 total. So, um, we'll talk about, more about that shortly. So that's just kind of the summary, just to kind of, kind of help you hone in on that. So the next page is the spreadsheet that I put together, once Scott and Leslie and Umba provided me with, uh, the details, the summaries of everything that we've put together. So these are all the funds, uh, that you guys will be, um, responsible for approving, um, at the October meeting. So if you walk through this, I, I'll just, it's the same format I've used the last couple of years, but it will just start at the top and kind of work our way across, and you can see how this easily works. But the General Fund is the first, uh, item on the list. It shows our miscellaneous revenues of $14,856,000, our property tax revenues of $18,869, total revenue $33.7, total expenses $32.3, just as I've mentioned a while ago, which gives us a, a positive cash flow at the end of 2019 of $1.4 million. So you can just look through these at your leisure. I'm not going to go through all of them right now, but I guess the most important thing would be that last column where the comments are, that tells you which ones are balanced, which ones will be using a cash balance, and which one, the last two, or the next of the last two are the unbalanced, two golf courses. So, once again, when I say we're using cash balances, um, I, I don't have current cash balances. I mean, I, I know what the June report says, but through the end of September, I don't have those yet, but I will for next month, and so I want to be able to show you on those particular funds what we anticipate our ending cash balances of this year will be, so then we can roll into this, and then you can see how it affects the end of next year's cash balance. So I'll bring that to the next month's meeting. We just haven't had time to do cash flows on all those funds yet with all the other things going on. So it's, it's very similar to the last year, um, from that perspective. If you look at the, the difference column, the next of the last column, and so the, the first dark, um, bolded number, $529,688, that means we have a positive cash balance of all those funds of that amount, and then wastewater is right below that of $1.3 million, which leaves us with a total, um, uh, positive cash balance, uh, beyond the budgets, if you will, uh, not spent of $1.8 million. The thing to keep in mind with that is, is now we begin to talk more about, uh, putting money back and, and, um, having funds available to us to, in our pool, if you will, so we don't have to borrow funds. The bigger that number gets, the more, the easier it allows us to get to the point where we need. Um, what's important to keep in mind is that we will have some positive cash balances at the end of this year, and it'll be better than what we projected, just like '17 was better than what we had projected back in '17. So when you add the cash balances that I'll show you next month, plus this, and, and keep in mind two things that are really important. One is, we won't spend all this budget, we never do. Uh, most of the operating funds, you know, will probably be 1% to 2% under budget, somewhere in that range. We'll keep squeezing them, so there isn't a lot of play, but things like Edit and others, you know, we may not spend all of that, they may be bigger numbers. The other thing that we don't know right now is what our property tax dollars are going to be. So if you look at that second or third column, the P-Tax column, you'll see that right now we think we're going to take in 22, almost $23 million in property taxes. That is what the DLGF is telling us right now, based on the July posting that they put on their website for every county. The problem we have right now is, uh, the Vigo County government has not submitted the Certified Assessed Net Values to the state yet. They were due on August 1st. Uh, we're one of seven counties that have not done that yet. I'm sure they're working on it, but once that goes in, and so the numbers that I'm showing you has no assessed value growth in it. It's just based on what they had at the beginning of the year. And so I'm almost certain this number goes up, so it makes this budget even better, but I have no idea how much it goes up. We know how many people filed appeals, but you don't know how many of those appeals will be won or lost, and you, and based on the numbers, they said it was only 100 more than what filed in the reassessment in 2010. It doesn't seem like it's an outrageous number, but we don't know what the effect will be. So once the county turns in their Certified Net Assessed Values, then Umba can crunch our numbers for us in a day, and I'll be able to come back and update this with more revenue. I'm just almost certain of that. And so if you look, um, the first place that will do that, and I'm just kind of editorializing now, just so you'll know, Transit's kind of right in the middle, or just below the middle, if you find that, and work your way across, and you'll see that, uh, it's a negative 272,550. That'll be the first place we put some of that money. So let's say we get a half a million dollars, I think it'll be more than that, let's say it's a half a million, we'll put that 272,550 in there to balance that one out, because that is a property tax, um, assisted fund. And then that will take care of the majority, the next one would be MVH, it needs a little bit, but that, our goal will be to take care of those first, and then the rest of that that we have will just basically be cash available to us to be put into the pool, because we're not talking about increasing the budgets, obviously, of what they are, what we proposed here today. So, the moving pieces are Certified Net Assessed Values, that then tells us eventually what our property tax cap credits will be for next year, that turns into a number that I believe will be bigger than 22.9 million. Um, just don't know how much. So, um, any questions about those two pages?
Mayor, do you have any idea when the county's going to submit that?
No, I asked, and they're working on a couple of things, and it didn't give me a date.
Don't they have deadlines with their own budget that they have to work on?
Well, you know, they just estimate, I mean, just like we, you know, and so that's all the taxing entities here, we just have to estimate.
Thanks.
So hopefully it'll be soon, and I'm hoping it'll be done, so the next meeting I can bring you a new sheet showing you those numbers on there. The next page says Budget Comments. So what I pulled out was kind of the big changes, not the ones that went down, because we have several budgets that were reduced, but these are the ones that went up, um, of some significance, I mean, at least 1% or more. So I want to just point out a few things before we get into the individual budgets, this may help you with some of the, answer some of the questions. In the General Fund, we're up 1.16% over 2018, and the four areas that had the biggest part of that are these four, the Controller's Office. And the Controller's Budget this year, we have a, if you remember last year, I don't know if you will or not, but we had reduced the budget, we did some IT reductions, and we did a, a reduction in, in Leslie's budget, uh, for a position, but we put a half a position in. So we had for this year, and she's working on filling that right now, had a half a position with no benefits. So the big change in her budget is adding one and a half positions and benefits for two full-time people. So, um, that's why that significant increase is in her budget. We need those two people. If you remember, we had eight when I started here, we have four today, and these two will help us be able to process things and move through and get things done much quicker, because we're just, I mean, it, it, the load is tremendous. So that's why that increases there. In Engineering, we moved three positions from Engineering Non-Reverting, um, so we did that because Engineering Non-Reverting revenues are not what we need them to be, you know, it kind of varies from year to year, but our revenues are down, and will be down in 2019, because the Indiana Finance Authority will not let us inspect our own stuff. Um, that's their rule, they don't want us to make money off the bonds, they'd rather pay a consultant to do that, which costs a lot more than it costs us to do it, but that's the IFA rule. So, we lose revenue in the Non-Reverting Fund that we could have gone out and done that same inspection, and we've done that. We did it on the wastewater plant, we do inspections for redevelopment, um, we do inspections, you know, anything that we can do, we do. We have certified people that are trained and, and are just as good as anybody else out there, but the Indiana Finance Authority, we're not let us use bond proceeds to pay ourselves to do inspections, so.
When did they, when did they issue that order, Mayor?
Uh, it's been a while back. It wasn't just for us, it's for everybody.
Do you have a memo that you can send the?
Uh, we could probably get one, they just told us that verbally, so, um, because, you know, we were trying to put this together, figuring out what our revenues would be, so normally we take in about 400 to 500,000 a year, and we projected 362 for next year, because we won't be able to inspect those two projects we're going to do. But we have other redevelopment things and other projects they can inspect, and I think, you know, if, if we weren't going through, if we were out on the open bond market, it wouldn't be an issue, it's just the Indiana Finance Authority. The Fire Department, uh, went up, um, because the SAFRA grant ends at the end of February, sometime in March, it, it probably will go into March a little bit, and we didn't have quite enough positions built in, uh, to cover the difference for the rest of the year. So I remember, I think it was 244,000, that, don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure that's what the amount was for that, to carry it through. But keep in mind, we will be having people begin to retire, and so that's all kind of part of this transition. We're kind of maximum staffed right now, and we'll be through the end of the grant cycle. We're having to add a few people right now to stay in compliance with the grant, but then next year we'll begin to lose people, and over the next couple of years, we have the potential to lose quite a few firefighters. So it'll cycle back down, where we won't need, um, that much probably, we won't need that much for 2020, but that's what we need for 2019 to carry us through the end of the year. That was the big change there. And then in the IT department, uh, one of the, um, things, positions we'd taken out a senior systems person, we took it out of last year's budget, because Brad just wasn't able to fill it, he tried for a year, couldn't do it, we're putting it back in the budget, we've added a couple thousand dollars to that, um, position, and we're going to try it again. We really need that, that position in IT, it's a critical function for us to, uh, to manage our IT network, so. And then there were some equipment purchases, um, that we pulled out of CCD. We normally use CCD to buy equipment, a lot of things like phone system when we bought before, and big computer equipment servers and things like that, but we needed the CCD fund for some other things next year, and so we told Brad he had to cut back a little bit, so we had to force it back into his budget. It's not a tremendous amount, but, um, and we probably won't spend it all, but once again, we need that cushion to be able to catch up on some things we haven't been able to do, because we just haven't had the funds to do it. Um, the next one is the CCD fund, and the biggest change here, that, that 12, almost 13%, is for a payment debt service on a salt storage building that we need for the Street Department. We're not in, um, we're, IDIM beats us up through the wastewater treatment plant, they come out and inspect that, because we have salt that gets into the wastewater system, because every time it rains hard, that building leaks, and we can't contain it, it doesn't have concrete around it to contain the salt, and so it gets into the system, and then we have to deal with it on the other end, and so, um, we've got to fix that, replace that building, basically, because it's, it's deteriorated after all these years, it needs to be replaced.
Is there a particular advantage to having or not having a CCD fund?
The advantage is that the property taxes you collect are outside of the levy for this. It's a separate levy that you're allowed to have, and so if you didn't have it, we just wouldn't collect it.
That sounds like a good thing.
It is a very good thing.
Thank you.
And every few years, they make us reestablish the CCD fund. Some of you that have been around a while, you know that they will tell you, oh, you're at the end of your cycle, they start taking some taxes away from you, and then you have to reestablish it. So, another weird state rule. The Edit Fund is up significantly, but that's because of two things, really. The biggest, it says 50%, which, it's 49%, but the two biggest pieces of that are Lafayette Avenue at 1.5 million, and the 250,000 increase in the Convention Center line item. If you remember, last year we cut half of the Convention Center out, because we knew we weren't going to need all that for this year, but we got to put it back now, since it's becoming a reality. So those two things alone are almost the whole amount of the increase in Edit. So this year, for Edit as an example, we're not going to spend as much, and so we, our cash balance is probably going to be about a million dollars more than what we anticipated at the end of this year, that we carry over to next year, and I'll go through the Edit details with you in just a couple minutes. The LRS budget's up a little bit, it's, uh, primarily for workers' comp. If you remember appropriation five that we did earlier this year, we, you guys approved of funding the 2018 workers' comp, uh, in MVH fund, and now, but we, because it fell out accidentally, it just didn't get keyed in last year, or something happened, we're not sure, um, and so we had to reestablish it for '18, but now for '19, we have to have that $100,000 entered, so that's for the Street Department, that will be their workman's comp. I hope it's enough, um, we've been averaging twice that over the last three years, but so far this year we've only spent $17,000, so, um, we'll see how it goes. So that's why that number is there. Parks Department, uh, it's not a big increase, but we moved a maintenance position that has been in Holman Links for a long time, when all of our other maintenance positions are in the Parks budget, no matter what park they're assigned to. So we moved that out of the Holman Links budget and into the Parks budget, because there's some various activities that we do there that are not only golf course related. Um, and then increased gasoline and pool supplies line items, and they're not big ones, but that was just the increase there. And then, of course, the new budget, uh, for Public Safety, the LIT, um, we have got, uh, we, we moved all of the Police Department General Fund, non-Series 1, and all of Fire Department General Fund, non-Series 1, into the Public Safety budget. So the only thing that's in the two budgets you see now for Fire and Police are salaries and benefits, Series 1 stuff only. So it's pretty clean, and in the LIT budget, if you've noticed, if you've had time to look at it, I broke out, um, the, like, if, if they have contractual services, it'll say contractual services PD, contractual services Fire Department, so you can tell and they can track their own within that budget.
Is that with, uh, other communities that have the Public Safety, is that what they did with their budget?
They, it's all across the board, you know, I mean, sometimes they stuck longevity in there, sometimes they put salaries, I mean, you know, it, you can do anything you want, there's no restrictions, it just has to be public safety related. I thought it would be cleaner to do this for the first year, just to kind of watch, and it'd be really easy to follow the General Funds and this, so, we'll see. Uh, Transit, uh, primarily because we put a little bit of money in there for capital purchase, and, um, we also had to recreate a capital maintenance line item that was accidentally left out. We have to track for the feds, when we repair a bus that's bought with federal money, you've got to have a separate line item for that, versus your line item for a bus you buy with your own money. So we had to create a capital maintenance line item, so the feds will be happy, they can see exactly what we spent on the buses that we bought with their money. Um, and then wastewater, uh, pretty significant increases, the, the three biggest things are, um, you know, we did the phosphorus project, that's being wrapped up now, we, and this, this is the ongoing part of wastewater. Um, about three years ago, they came and told everybody, okay, you got to remove phosphorus from what you're putting into the river. So we spent one and a half million dollars in, in, in construction dollars, engineering design and construction dollars down at the plant, to add a whole new component, so the water can, the phosphorus can be pulled out of the water. But our new annual cost for the chemicals is a half a million dollars. So we spent it one and a half one time, and now we have to spend a half a million dollars in chemicals each year to do the work, have it do its thing. Um, no choice, but that's just the way it works. Um, and then increased line items for workers' comp, they were a little bit too low, some drainage work, equipment repair and maintenance, so that was about $325,000 for those, and some other smaller ones, those are the three big things. And then lagoon cleanup, we budgeted a million dollars this year, we spent the million dollars, and we had them stop, they'll be back in January, or if it's not frozen, and we've got one and a half million in next year to clean up those IP lagoons. And so, uh, we continue to work, uh, on a couple of angles on that, insurance recovery, and also just from a legal perspective, uh, to, I, I don't feel like we should have to pay for all that, but that's kind of what I'm being told that we have to do, and so I put the attorneys back on it again, and we're also, um, hired a firm to help us with the insurance recovery. So maybe someday down the road, we may get reimbursed for some of this, that's what I'm hoping. Um, and that one and a half million is not enough to clean it all up, there's still more besides that, that's what I'm willing to do next year, and, and, um, that's what we put in there. Then the last piece of that is, uh, increased debt service for band payment, uh, to the county. We've had $140,000 in there for interest, but for next year, um, we need to bump that up about 860 to get it to a million, and then this year, I'll be bringing an appropriation to you to fund the payments that we're making this year. We're making three payments, we made one in January, we made one in July, and we'll make another one in December, and so we don't have enough in that line item, we've got plenty of cash, but I'll need to bring an appropriation to you, once we know what that final payment is, and bring that exact appropriation to you here before too long. I'll let the bank calculate that out. Um, and then the last one is Wasting Refugees, uh, we just, we're collecting a little bit more money, you know, the trash rate went up, so, um, we raised the expenses $100,000, so we can pay a little bit more out of here, is really what that boils down to. So those are the big changes to the budget, everything else went down, or was very, very minor increase. Any questions about that, Michelle?
Can, can you tell us what we paid in July on the, on the band?
Yes, I got it.
You got it?
Yep.
I knew you would ask that, Councilman Elliott.
We paid, we paid $150,000 in January on principal, and then, and an interest payment, and then in, uh, on August 24th, we paid a half a million dollars, plus some interest. So our current balance is 5.350. And then so at the end of the year, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do, I think we can do it, is pay 850,000 in December, and there'll be a little bit of interest, too, and that'll take us down to 4.5 million at the end of this year that we owe on the $6 million.
Okay, that's good. And then, um, I did, uh, meet with Doug Graham about the workers' comp.
Uh-huh.
Kind of learn how that works, and, and it was, uh, it was very enlightening, uh, and I would encourage us, we'd have him come and talk to the County Council sometime when we're going to have a light, light agenda, and it, it put a lot of those things in, into perspective for me, uh, as to how all that, how all that works.
And they've done a nice job of going out and inspecting our locations for us, and coming back with a list of things you ought to do. Now luckily, they're not big things, so I feel pretty good about what we do, but it always boils down to not just the environment, but the individual, the employee, making sure that they don't do anything silly.
Clear about that.
So, but, and so I don't want to jinx anything, but this year's looking pretty good so far compared to our past years.
But why it's set up the way it's set up, he's convinced it's the right way.
Yep.
Still, so.
Okay. Well, I, I think we should, we do need to bring him in, and he asked that after he met with you, he said, do I need to come to full council? I said, I'm sure the President would entertain that, so we'll do that at some point.
Mayor?
Yes.
While you're on, uh, local road and street, um, are we, I know you've got a lot in here for workers' comp, but are we doing anything for new equipment?
There is some things in the MVH budget and some things in the LRS budget. If you remember, on MVH, we have to do a 50/50 split now, we can't spend more than 50% on streets. So, once we built the MVH budget, knew that we were 50/50, we kind of shoved a few things over to LRS to pay for things, whether it's equipment or anything else. The equipment needs down there are not tremendous, you know, we bought two dump trucks a couple of years ago, we're still paying on, we bought three leaf ax, what we need is sweepers next. And just so you'll know, since you asked the question, it looks like we may be able to get a grant that'll pay, like, all of the, but $200,000 to buy four sweepers, um, and so I may be coming back for an appropriation at some point, but I didn't put it in here, because we just found that out.
Yeah, I heard they were working on it, or you guys were, so I didn't know where that was.
We just, so it's, it's looking good, but we're not there yet, and I, I couldn't do it when we proposed the budget, I didn't know that.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay, so, let's, um, let's hope the judge and the clerk do their thing, if you guys don't mind, and I'll come back to these two next, because they're specific budget things, because I know that they're wonderful.
Um, Council President and Council Members, Michelle Edwards, City Clerk, and this is Kim Jackson, our City Court Judge. This is her first time, so we're going to take it easy on her, right? Uh, just on the City Clerk's budget, and it applies also to the City Court budget, which she'll explain, our biggest increase was because of health insurance. Um, we did not really, we didn't increase any of our other lines for supplies, services, contractual, et cetera, et cetera, but we ran into a situation where different employees have different insurance needs, and so we're seeing a significant increase in that. Uh, we happy to answer any questions? Would you like to any, add anything?
I would just add that, um, that there is an increase in the court budget, and it is mostly the line share of it is for health insurance for the judge, and that's kind of up to your governor. Fortunately for you, the last few judges that you've had, including myself, have been able to get insurance elsewhere. I don't know whether your next person will be able to do that or not, so we've budgeted for that in here.
And we appreciate the lack of questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It was wonderful to be here.
Good, come in. Okay, so.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right, back to me for just a minute, and I'll just talk about these two things, just for your, these are for your thought. So, the first one's the Edit Budget. Um, and this is my spreadsheet, so this isn't the budget, but it's, it reflects the budget. So this is our five-year, and I, every year I give you a five-year plan outlook. So, we don't need to get into a lot of details, I just want to point out a couple of things. So, starting at the top there, beginning cash balance, it's 123117, cash balance was 2.3 million, and so for '18, this is our budget, so if, assuming we spend 100%, we'll end the year with 3.6 million dollars in the Edit Fund. And then, because we're, you know, we're obviously shifting, and next year's going to be a bigger year, but even with that bigger increase in a budget, um, we are going to see a 3.3 million dollar ending balance, so you can just kind of work your way through that. What's new on here, you might find in that middle, the second section, it's the Capital Project section, and if you look down towards the bottom, I've added four new things into here. So right underneath 13th and 8th Avenue Project, you'll see City Hall Update, City Hall Parking Lot, Turn to the River Project, and Ray Park Project. So I'm showing some expenditures beginning in 2020. I don't know what'll happen, happen after 2020, but I know that these things are all kind of on the cycle to begin, uh, contributions on our part. The first one, the City Hall Update, is, we need new heating and cooling systems, new wiring, you name it, we need it. This building, the boiler is on its, you know, toward the ends of its life. Um, we've put this off for a while, um, we need new windows, we need to get rid of the window air conditioners, I mean, there's just a whole variety of things that you folks know, and so we are going to be looking at a couple of options to do something where we'll be able to package that and have an annual payment for a while that isn't too able to package that and have an annual payment for a while that isn't too dramatic, probably in the $50,000 range. Maybe a little bit more than that, we'll see. It all depends what we do, whether we break this into phases or not. But we're going to have to get started on something with that, and maybe even as soon as next year. So I may come back to you and ask for some funds that we'll obviously have, but I don't know yet. So I'm just laying that out there. The City Hall Parking Lot has to do with Turn to the River Project in a way, because as you know, we have to redesign our parking lot. It's already been redesigned, I shouldn't say that. Has to be redone. All of the water that's collected goes into the combined sewer, and so we can't do that. We've got to fix that. The traffic flow is horrid, as you know. It's just all backwards. And so we're going to redo this parking lot and do it in a way that we capture the storm water and not put it into the sewer system. And so it's already been designed. We've got an engineering estimate on it, but we want to kind of tie it into the Turn to the River Project because it goes right down the middle of it. And so I don't know if any of you... You went there, Neil, yesterday. We saw the presentation, and Martha, I don't know if you were there or not. I didn't see the back of the room.
No, I wasn't able to make it.
And, you know, that's moving along. They're going into formal design now, where they're going to start getting engineering estimates, and so we'll have to figure out between us and the county what we're going to help pay for out here and which years, because it'll be definitely a multi-year project, multi-phases. So I put it in here just because we're going to need to make a commitment to it, and I want to make a commitment to it, and I think the city should, so I'm just putting it out there. And then the Ray Park Project is related to what our contributions may or may not be as friends of Ray Park carry out their private fundraising to do some things down there. There'll be some things that we'll probably need to do from a parking lot or road perspective that I think will be our contributions to this project, but we're not there yet. And that Earl can speak to that if you guys have any questions. We had a meeting just again this week with them. A lot of excited people are going to do some neat things, and so we're going to see some private dollars flowing into that park, and then we're going to kind of partner with some of the public part of it. So that's the only new things that are in there. So this is just for your reference. I give you this every year at the same time, and this is what it looks like for the next five years.
Mayor, we decide what we're going to do with the community crossing grant application for next year?
Apply.
But for which project?
The one we just... We put in for First and Holman, but you also have backup things. And so depending on what they fund, because we've got money in our budget to cover that, of course, we've got to pay it out, and then we'll get reimbursed. Last time, you know, it took them five months before we got a reimbursement. So I think we'll get something, but I have no idea if it'll fund at all, fund half of it, fund a third of it. I don't know.
But First and Holman is where you...
That's our primary one, but then we have backups to that. So what they select is up to them.
Okay, thank you.
The next sheet is your terror fire department capital plan. I give this to you every year at this time also.
I have a question on that.
Edit. Yep.
Margaret Avenue corridor, is that just going to go on forever?
Well, no, this is inspection. And so this is inspection. So, no, I need to take that out. $200,000 for next year. It may be... It's a placeholder for that, but I don't know what I want. I don't know what it ought to be yet. So I probably need to change 2020 and lower it for a placeholder, because probably the next thing that we do will be redevelopment side versus us, what we'll do going east, that'll be them coming west with another section. But I don't know yet.
And then I see gateway projects on here, and that's not a lot of money on that line. Is that like welcome signs or something?
It's going to have to turn into something like that. This is what I intended. Part of this is what we wanted to do at I-70 and 41 is kind of the next big thing, and I've got the design for it. It's not cheap. Doesn't mean it's the final design, but I've had it for two years, basically, but we just don't have the funds to do that yet. We want to do something at 46 and 70, but that's a little trickier out there. The way they laid that out is not quite so good. Our other entrances into the city could use some sprucing up, and so this is kind of a placeholder for that until we really figure out a plan of which things in which order.
Great, tell how much did that... Was there a rough estimate on that 70 and 41?
It all depends how much, like, see, Art Spaces wants to do some art things down there, so they would raise part of that on their own. You know, some have talked about a Coca-Cola bottle down there, things like that. I don't know what it'll be yet at this point, and of course, NDOT will have to approve anything we do. But some of the bridge improvements that we want to do to make it look better, you know, some of the things you might see in Indianapolis, St. Louis, as you cross a bridge, lighting, things like that, you're talking several hundred thousand dollars. But some of that would be private donations. We've got people saying that they want to help with that, just not ready to roll that out. Timing hasn't been right to do that. There's other more pressing needs.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is kind of along the sidelines, but not. Who takes care of all the spaces that we do have on the maintenance entrances of the city?
Well, we do most of them. We do I-70 and 46. We have an agreement with NDOT that they allow us to do that, and I mean, it looks great. I mean, it really does. They keep the grass cut, cut out the dead trees. So we do several of those. There's a few that some local groups donated some things, like up here at 41 and Maple, that they come up and take care of that. They clean the box out and run the weed eater periodically, but we do most of the rest of them, just with existing staff.
Some of them, like out at 46 and stuff, that's...
That's a little trickier. We do, you know, one belongs to us. The one on the west side of the intersection is ours. That's in the city. The other two are NDOTs. Rose Holman is going to adopt the one, the big one, across the way. We're working on a new agreement with NDOT because they won't allow Rose Holman to go into agreement with NDOT. It has to be a municipality or county. So we're going to be the intermediary on that, so the attorneys are working on that. And then that little one in the middle is NDOTs, and we're trying to figure out what they're willing to do with that or not. They really don't want these projects. They're not big on that, so you have to really...
That's obvious.
Yeah, you have to work on that with them, and I mean...
Some of those are looking bad out there.
You know, we've told them about Third Street. These weeds out here, that's all now, and we've reported it multiple times, and they've still not come and kept those yet. So that's a whole nother conversation.
Okay.
Anything else on edit? Okay, the last one here is your terror fire department capital budget, 20-year budget. As I said, I give this to you every year. It shows you from year to year what our payments are on existing things, based on our cycle of replacement. So you'll see on most of these items, you know, it's either a five-year or an eight-year payback, depending on whether it's an ambulance or an engine versus a ladder truck. And it goes for five years, and then we take a year or two off, just we break it a little bit to make sure we try not to spend, you know, too much in any one year, even though we have a very healthy cash balance in EMS fund. We try to be consistent with this equipment. So sometimes we keep an engine an extra year or two because it's in great condition, not used as much as some other ones. And then we replace the ones, like Engine 2 and Engine 3 have to be replaced more often because they get the most calls in the city and have the most wear and tear on those rigs. So the main thing about this is 2018 and 2019 are pretty much set in stone. Beyond that, it can vary a year or so. It may move out a year, it may move up a year, depending on the condition of our equipment. So this is just for your reference, is all that is. So, based on the pleasure of the council, we can go through however you want to go through the rest of this. If you want to just ask questions, if you want to go through and look at every budget, I guess however your pleasure, whatever your pleasure is, how I'll be happy to do it.
Counsel, any opinions on that?
I have a couple of questions. Just some folks I've talked to, there's apparently an arts and culture district, supposed to be allotted $25,000. Is that... I just want to check and make sure that that was in the budget somewhere. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, and we can do that. It'd probably be through contractual services is where that would be, but I was made aware of that a few weeks ago, and I told John that we would find a way to support that if that happens. You know what I mean?
Oh, if they get the...
They move forward with that.
All right, great. And then are we, this year, are we going to do anything for Launch Terra Hope?
For what?
Launch Terra Hope.
We've got... This year, we have made two contributions to them. I made a $25,000 pledge from our business development line item, one-year pledge, and so we started that in second quarter of this year. I haven't made a commitment. We have money in the budget for next year, but I haven't made a commitment on the city for next year yet.
Okay.
But I'll get one payment definitely in the first quarter of next year.
All right.
Roll it in two years. Yep.
That's all I had for now.
And I apologize for coming in late. I was at a fundraiser, but have we talked about Holman Links and Ray Park? I get a lot of calls from golfers, and they're saying, "How are you?" I try to explain the rollover of the previous years and how that's dug the hole. Could you better explain that for us so the public can understand? And when I look at this here on the comparison, this is much better. So, I mean...
There's two reasons... Well, we can just talk about it now. I was going to, I just haven't talked about that one yet. So if you look at, I mean, you look at the comparison, or, I mean, that's probably the easiest thing to do. We've made reductions to the budget that we talked about. We had been making some little ones, but we identified some larger ones that we just wanted to make sure that if we made those cuts, we wouldn't put them in a bind. So we started making, we implemented some of those cuts this year. Now, at some point, I will bring you, and when we come back and we bring you the budget reductions for 2018, like we do every year, usually in November or December, we'll say we want to cut the budget, all these budgets by what we haven't spent. Those two will be on there, and those will have $100,000 or so of cuts for this year because we're not spending it, but we budgeted higher. This is the first budget where we actually cut it on paper, you know, that you see it going in.
Yes.
So these reductions are just a variety of things, from chemicals to staff to whatever else. And so if you look at the sheet that I gave you before you got here, Councilman Morris, this one.
Okay.
So if you look down at Ray Park and Holman Links are now near the bond, you'll see those two?
Yes.
So we're projecting to lose $106,000 at Holman Links next year and $107,000 at Ray Park. So together, you know, you're talking about a little over $200,000. We have been losing about $450,000 or so between the two. So with the increased revenues that the Parks Board implemented this year, we hope to see a full, you know, we'll see if they can reach those numbers or not, but we're going to do better. There's no question we're going to do better. And with the reductions we've made, this is going to be much closer to what the loss will be.
Right.
We're not going to make money.
So with the changes, we are doing better at the golf...
Absolutely, but what's hard to tell is if you just look at cash balance, like the report that came out today, our Ray Park and Holman Links, let me find them. Are they on the front? Okay, so right here. So right now, at the end of June, we're showing a negative $4.2 million. And I'll explain this in a second.
Right, and that's where it's confusing.
And a negative $1.2 million for Ray Park. But that's accumulated over many, many years. So we will add to the deficit by this amount next year. So instead of it jumping up by $450,000, it'll be half that, or, you know, less than half of that. So the key is getting people to understand that we're not losing that every year, because I've had people say that to me too. How can you be losing a half a million dollars a year if we're not losing a half a million dollars every year now?
Well, and also they see this $4 million and the $3 million and those figures, and they're thinking, "My God, something has to be done."
So the mistake, not a mistake, but just the change that caused us a problem is when the previous administration made these non-reverting funds in separate, they wanted to track it. I get that. They weren't just embedded in the Parks budget, but the problem is when they have negative amounts in it and you don't make a profit, then you can never get rid of the negative amount. You just carry it on and on and on.
Through the years, those have multiplied.
So at some point...
That's what the public's seeing, and they don't understand.
At some point, we're going to have to transfer some money over there and clear that. Okay? So if we get to the point where we're breaking even, or Parks gets more property tax money, and we can help them out by putting property tax money to help cover this like it used to be, the Parks used to help pay a lot of those bills. They couldn't, they can't now because they've lost a million dollars a year because of tax caps. Can't cover that $450,000 loss, so it just keeps accumulating. And that's been since 2009. It just keeps getting worse. So if we... Someday, we'll have to transfer some money over there to clear those out. You can't keep negative forever, but they're in the same pool. And so let's say we just took a million dollars from edit and we put it in Ray Park, as an example, then your deficit would go down to $220,000, or, in this case, $227,000, let's say, and the cash pool would be still exactly the same. The same cash would still be in the pool, but you would have permanently taken it from edit. I'm just giving you an example. I'm not saying we're doing that, but just an example. So someday, we've got to fix that. And then I've had other people say, "Well, just put it back in Parks." Well, our Parks budget is balanced, but we only make like $100,000 at the end of the year. We have $100,000 more in revenue than what we spend. If I combine those together, then all of a sudden, the Parks budget's going to go into a negative $5 million deficit, and then the DLGS is not going to approve our budget. They don't care about the non-reverting funds other than they're negative.
I appreciate you explaining that, and I hope that it's written up. Because I get calls all the time from the people who are not golfers...
Right.
That look at this $4 and $5 million or what have you, and they just shake their head, but yet it's not in reality of how they're doing year to year.
That's the total deficit since these funds were created back in 2003 or something.
Thank you.
Four, maybe? I don't know. Somewhere back there.
Thank you, Mayor. All right.
Councilman Nelson?
I mean, we could either, I mean, I don't care if we go through each, you know, budget and discuss, but one of the questions I had, you know, the whole jail controversy's kind of divided our community, needless to say, it's made some enemies, made some friends, however you want to put it, but at the end of the day, some of the arguments is that it was going to help the city out, bail the city out, with some of the narrative involved with that. So with the PSAP, the city's going to get, what, $400,000?
Well, we're not going to get anything. We just wanted to pay it.
Correct. So that'd be $400,000.
Yes.
Okay. And then would be, it looks like the public safety tax would be $1.6 million, is what you had.
That's what I think we'll collect next year. I'm hopeful, because we're only going to collect nine months next year.
Okay, so that's going to be $2 million that we have this year that we didn't have last year. So what can we tell the public that they'll see better service, better, not reduce our ability to have to borrow? What can we say that we're going to make a difference?
Well, I think it's a little bit all, because, one, we're going to be able to maintain our staffing levels if we need to have. We really need to add a couple of police officers to get back up to where we've had some retirements. We've not, we've really stretched those out in the past. We're going to need to buy some more police cars, you know, we've got some that are 200,000 miles again here. We get there pretty quickly, and we haven't been able to do much of that. We bought little pieces off, but not the big stuff. So from a public safety perspective, by shifting all those other expenses, I think it should be very clear to them, one, where the money's going. And so we take the burden off the property tax side. It's going to allow us to invest in parks, you know, that's my first one. Transit, we need a little bit. But it's going to give us then an opportunity to then put money back so we can reduce our borrowing. But keep in mind on that borrowing, you know, we've gone from $9 million two years ago down to next year, we're talking about probably three and a half for a TAW for the year. So when we pay that redevelopment loan back in June, we'll have gone from nine to three to three and a half million in three years. And so, depending on how we end this year and how next year, what revenues we can set back, and obviously we can reduce the TAW in 2020, and so, the benefit to everybody is, is just having more cash flow available to us, not to spend, but to some investment, but on the other hand, to set money back so we don't have to do any of the borrowing. So, the county's always been in that position because they've always had cash, so they haven't had to do that. Now, as they face their issues, this is going to help them too, of course, but of course they got the facts sooner than we did, so we had, we're kind of in the hole, if you will.
Right.
So, basically, with, people will see a difference with parks. Not next year, but I think once, if we get these property tax numbers, we may be able to do some stuff, but right now, I can't increase parks because I don't know what our property taxes are going to be. But as soon as we find that out, we could make a decision to do something in 19, but 20 for sure.
Okay.
I'd like to put a half a million dollars back in parks.
Okay, I just think we need to be, you know, better at explaining to the community that, yeah, we got this extra money, but they're going to see a benefit as well, whether it's with services or whatnot.
I just think maintaining of services, we're not going to have, I mean, we're good to go now, we're not going to have to worry about degradation of service, we made it, you know, we survived it, and once again, we won't see a penny of this till April of next year, so I think we can talk about it a little bit better next year as we plan for '20, because, one, we'll see if we really collect all that, you know, if it's really true, and two, you know, kind of what happens with everything else, you know, so that's when we have that public safety discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Crosson?
Yeah, Mayor, the unfortunate incident this month with the sinkhole and, and ancient piping, pipes, do we have a plan for starting to replace and repair those so that we're not going to continue to face these kinds of issues? I mean, my understanding is that it's pretty much citywide, that there are really old pipes everywhere and...
Some are older than others.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Some are really, really old. Go ahead.
No, no, and I just wondered where, where the, I mean, I assume that this is a very expensive venture to take care of this problem, less expensive than it would have been if the fire truck had been wrapped with it, but nevertheless, expensive and, and so, you know, in anticipation that we want to either avoid those situations or be prepared to deal with them should another occur, where would that, where is that planning?
Well, the thing is, first of all, that particular sewer right there runs from Ninth and Walbash to the river, and it's four-foot wide, brick, and it's really, I saw some of the pictures, it's kind of amazing how good a shape it's in, but you're going to have those sections that are going to collapse. A little farther east, a few years ago, we re-lined several of those sewers with concrete. That's when we had a, you know, wastewater capital fund and we didn't get, we've lost $2 million a year in property tax caps in a sanitary district that's totally separate of our property tax cap losses, that money used to go to those capital projects. So, not having $2 million bucks a year goes a long way towards making those kind of repairs. As things are kind of settling down now, you know, we're never going to be able to collect any other property taxes, I mean, we're just, we're not going to get any more than what we just talked about last week. We get the $6 million to pay the debt, that's what we're going to get, we'll never get those other dollars ever again. Somewhere down the road, you know, stormwater training, or you need something to generate some revenue to do those kind of projects, you know, that southeast end of town doesn't have, you know, it's, Holman Street has stormwater, that whole area down there has storm drains, curbs, anything. That's about a $20 million project roughly for that area. People in our neighborhood complain, I don't know if they complained to you, Earl, but one of your neighbors over there, across the street and down one, complains all the time about our neighborhood, we've got four storm drains, George used to live, one of them was right in front of his old house, and it can't handle the water when you have this kind of a situation. Just our neighborhood, just to replace that's a million bucks, just, just one neighborhood. And so, we'd have to go in and rip it all out, redo it, and you just, you know, that's not real feasible, but we've got to bite pieces off. And so, until we get this long-term control plan thing figured out by going back to the IDAM and renegotiating that through the EPA, that'll give us a better handle. Each year, we're going to need to carve out some money to put in a capital fund within the wastewater treatment plant like it used to be, they used to have a million to $2 million a year, and we just, it's, that money's just evaporated. So, one of the things we're doing right now is, engineering's hired a firm to come in and scope the rest of this line, because since we've had two collapses, we had Seventh and Ohio and now Fourth and Ohio, we're going to go ahead and look, I mean, go through it slowly, our equipment is not sophisticated enough to really get what we want, we can do a lot, but we want to hire a company to do that, and we'll find out where the weak spots are, and we may be able to get in there and do some things ahead of time with the concrete, but that's only because we know that one seems to be a real problem right now, and there's some others under the same age.
Thank you, Ayew.
We need to charge people for taking pictures there, I think that would help our revenue problem.
Unreal, you would have thought that was the, I mean, it's in our history books now that we had a sinkhole at Fourth and Ohio, it's unreal.
President of mine in Florida saw it on their TV, on their station in Florida.
I'm just glad the fire truck didn't end up in it because you know what that was, we would have been glad they got it out. Sorry, I digress. I'll go.
All right.
Don, I'll email you a copy of the article, or the Flashpoint article that ran in the paper Sunday about the golf courses.
Okay.
That I wrote, and I think it'll clarify a lot of...
I've just been getting calls from the golfers and the non-golfers.
Yeah, well, I wrote that because I decided I was going to play in the city tournament, and rather than have everyone up and come and say something to me about what's going on with the golf courses, I'm going to try to answer their questions ahead of time. So, the, the next thing is, is, Karen, I, I can't wait till we get to talk about quality of place and quality of life issues, okay? But I also can't forget all the challenges we faced as a council in 2016 to deal with deficit accounts and the need just to raise revenue and, you know, and a lot of things that we did. And we, we made, I mean, 12/31/15 general fund was ended with a minus 8.8, then it went to 8.1 at the end of '16, and then 3.9, by the way, I calculated, at the end of '17, the end of '18, you're telling me it's going to be a lot better, and I believe that, you know, to be the case also. Now, I count what we owe DLR, you know, in my number. So, part of what we're doing is we're still filling in the...
Redevelopment, redevelopment.
Oh, redevelopment, okay, gotcha, I just, the shortfalls and balances that, that we have and, and trying to reduce those, those short-term borrowings, and, and we need to continue to, you know, to do that. I mean, we're, we're not quite there yet, we're getting close, and that's why I appreciate, you know, seeing this, being reminded of this five-year Edit plan, I know I probably got several of those from prior years, but forgot I had those, so we can start thinking about, you know, what some of the potential might be for the things that we could do quality of, of place-wise. Concerning the 911 fee, where has that been paid out of in the budget? A mix of Edit and CCD primarily, because I didn't want to use property tax dollars out of our general fund for that. Okay. Because of double taxation.
What line item in...
Contractual services.
Contractual services.
Yep.
Okay. CCD and Edit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I appreciate receiving, you know, these summaries and highlights as to what, what happened. I anxiously await, as I've probably told you six times already, the actual, more, more precise property tax revenue number so I can see where we're, where we're really...
I can't wait to get them myself.
I know, because that'll, that'll drive the, you know, what our budget surplus is really going to be, without allowing for any underspend, there's always going to be underspend. I have figured out you can't spend every dollar of every line of every fund, so there's always going to be some, and, and see what that improvement is. Probably a half a million dollars apart from you on the TAW borrowing next spring, and I'll probably try to bring that, those documents and my thoughts there next month. But the, the budgets, you know, I've, I've looked at them, emailed you a lot of my questions, got responses, I don't have a whole lot to, you know, to say about the, about them right now, because you've, you've answered those, so.
And he did have a few questions, as you can imagine, and it took me a little, a couple days longer, I apologize for that, glad you got them.
That's great.
Mayor, can we discuss our, our short-term borrowing plan for, for the upcoming...
Uh-huh. So, in December, we'll be back to the council to renew our $2 million to take it to June of next year, okay? So, we'll, we'll carry the $2 million to June and we'll pay that back and then we won't need it after June. I'll caveat that in a second. We're going to need a tax anticipation warrant, there's no way around that because you won't have enough cash to pay the bills, do the things we need to do, that first six months is a killer, we're not going to get any new public safety lit money until April, and so, kind of next year looks like this year, when the first few months are just very dry for revenue, we just don't get anything till May. And so, we'll have to survive, you know, and, and do what we need to do. So, my plan is to reduce that $4 million TAW to 3.5 million, sounds like Earl may have another number, he has mine and you may too, but I think there could still be a balance between redevelopment and the TAW. I, I really, you know, they're going to be sitting on a lot of cash, probably five or six million dollars of cash they're not going to spend next year, and there's no reason why we shouldn't balance that out, we could reduce the TAW to 2 million or something, you know, and still use a little bit of redevelopment money and it wouldn't affect them at all, and then we could reduce our interest by half, we could probably save $100,000 in interest. So, I'm, I'm going to be open to that discussion, I don't care, but, you know, we're going to keep reducing the amounts, and so, we're going to take another $2 million off next year to get us down to 3.5, or if we split it, we still need to probably be in that 3.5 range for the year, and then in '20, we'll be able to cut that again, permanently cut it. If that, I mean, that's, and I can put that in writing, I just, that's what I've been talking about and I'm still on that track, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I've talked to Mr. Witt about that, you know, 2 million, and he, and I said, "Well, you know, can we just continue to carry a million and save interest on a million dollars with DLR?" He, right away said, "He, he, that's just not a problem for us, for them to continue at that, that level." I mean, they can't spend everything they have anyway, they, they've got to have some dry powder in case something comes up, so if they can loan us their dry powder and, and save 40, 50,000 dollars a year now that rates have ticked up, it seems like that's the, that's the sensible thing to do. So, as opposed to paying them $2 million next, next July, June or July, then can we just pay down the...
A million.
TAW.
Or pay down, we, either way, it's the same, same toll.
Pay them a million and pay down TAW a million instead of paying DLR 2.
Absolutely.
That's, that's what's going to be in the, the document that, that I'll put together.
And I'm fine with that.
And I said, "What do you think your board will say about that?" And he said, "I don't think they'll have any problem with it either," so, and I don't think he would have answered that.
Right.
Volunteer that if he didn't firmly believe that was, that was the case.
And I, I'm sorry, go ahead. And, and, I mean, as long as they don't have any problem with it, to me, it's a no-brainer to take money that you're not going to have to pay interest on. I think anybody here, if somebody's willing to loan me $100,000, not going to charge me any interest on it, might go for that pretty quick. And to, to borrow money, I, I use $100,000 as a, just example, but to use money and has to pay interest on it, when you can offset it with something and it doesn't affect their operation, to me is a no-brainer, so.
Me too. It's, unfortunately, just kind of became a little bit of a political issue there and we've worked through it, and they supported everything we've done, so we all won at the end.
Any further comments from the council or...
Or I would just say, is there anything else you want next month? I'm going to bring you ending cash balances that will tie into this document that'll show you what our ending cash balances then will be at the end of next year, and I'm hoping that we'll have the property tax numbers by the next meeting, so then I can update this on here too.
So, so what cash balances do you hope to bring?
To the end of this year.
You're projected...
Right, yep.
For, for which?
All these funds that, that are, especially the ones we're using the cash balance for next year.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
I saw he was getting excited.
We just, we just haven't had time to do that. It's, it's, it's a lot of work, but we got to have it because I got to be able to make sure these all, it all still works, that we don't have to make some cut. If for some reason we find out our property tax dollars are less than this, which I, there's no way it will be, but, I mean, there's still some variable things that can happen to us here, and so, I want to be able to know exactly how much we're going to have.
Yeah.
And so, we'll have that done, and my gum started on today.
Then, then as much as we have the property tax dollars and we have that information, does that put us where Unbaugh can finalize the, we thought, comprehensive...
Financial plan?
They put all the, you know, our budget and everything in there, if, if we don't make any cuts, we'll have this newest thing in there, but it's those revenues, it's those property, that's kind of the missing piece.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we...
I wanted to, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Councilman Al.
Do we know if, I know you said they haven't certified, but have the assessments rolled over to the auditor's office and the auditor's is working on certifying, or are they waiting on the assessments to roll over to them?
I think it's rolled over.
I, I don't want to speak...
I have a different timeline, I'm not for sure. Because, I mean, once, once the auditor, I know, if they're waiting on the assessments to roll in, then they have to do their part in order to roll it, so I didn't know where, what section, if it's held up, if the assessment's going in or...
I'm not sure.
I, I was just told there were a couple of things they were working on, they wanted to see what the appeals, you know, what the final, which that's been, what, three weeks ago now? And then the other thing had to do with land values of which numbers to use, so, apparently there's, you know more about that than I do.
They're waiting on the assessments to roll into the auditor.
So, and I think it was just the land part and primarily residential, but that's all, I'm, don't put that in the paper, no, I just, that's just what I was told, and once they worked that out, they would submit them, because you know, their split tables end of the state on August 1st, so they're a little bit behind, and I'm not throwing them under the bus, I'm just saying that we need that and that'll tell us a ton.
No, I'm not throwing them under the bus either.
Yep.
But then there's shoes, so I, I kind of know, but that just, that kind of gives me some kind of idea of, hold on. Ayew.
I was just going to say, I appreciate the email for the June reports, I know your staff worked over the weekend for them, so, just want to tell you thank you.
And we started on July today, so we're going to get caught up here.
I have copies, hard copies, if anyone wants them.
Yeah, we just brought them in case somebody wanted them tonight.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
I just wanted to clarify, the budget process is just a little bit different than other ordinances, so the budget will not be on the first meeting in October's agenda, it will be on the second, so there will be no more discussion until I believe, is it October 11th?
11th, yes.
So, that's the next time the budget will be discussed and it's in gateway for action at that meeting. So, I just wanted to...
So, I'll meet you this information before that meeting, I'm just saying that we'll talk about it in that meeting, because well, I, I'll have something, I hope.
Just a quick question, is there anywhere that the public will be able to see this?
It's on the website.
On the website now, okay.
Yep, we put it on there after last week.
Okay, great.
Yep, it's there.
Move to adjourn.
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Al, that we adjourn this meeting. If there's a favor, say aye.